All right, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here this evening. The time is 7:00 o'clock on this Monday, April 15th, 2019. We will call this meeting to order at the Special Meeting of Telecall City Council. Clerk give us a roll call.
Councilor Long's here. Councilor Combs.
Here.
Councilor Hires.
Here.
Councilor Bliss.
Here.
Thank you very much. Item number three is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to telecall citizens. And in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any of those comments this time? Seeing no hands going up, we will move on to item number four, which is discussion and possible action related to logistics, potential street closures, et cetera, related to the 2019 Redfern Festival. Ms. Carr and Ms. Hale.
Hello. Good evening.
These are my major maps, Phil's.
Okay, so, this being my first year, we are not really reinventing the will at all. So, most of these, if not all, of these road closures are something we've seen over and over again. I did meet with city department heads last week, and we've kind of gone over these, so they're kind of all aware of what we're looking at here. So, I tried to break it down a little bit, so that we're not closing off major roads for long periods of time. So, I tried to shorten that down as much as possible. So, what we're looking at, if you'll look kind of at the orange roads, that is Morgan Street. So, our food trucks come in early Saturday, or Friday morning, and start setting up. So, that we would like to just block off after 5:00 p.m. on Thursday evening. That would be our earliest road closure, just because the nightlife kind of tends to park there and then stay overnight sometimes. So, we would like to go ahead and close that off early Thursday after, I think RJ's is really kind of the only business right there on Morgan Street. So, after they close, we'd like to go ahead and close that off, so that that can be ready to go Friday morning. Green is the major Muskogee portal, if you will. So, we would like to, setup will start technically at 4:00 a.m. on Friday. So, I will kind of leave that up to you guys, whether that's something we can close at 4:00, or if we need to wait until 6:00. Vendors start coming at 6:00 a.m. That's vendor check-in time. So, they will start coming in and setting up at that time. 4:00 a.m. is when we start putting out trash barrels and all that kind of stuff. So, for the safety of our volunteers, ideally, I would like to be able to close that at 4:00 a.m., but 6:00 a.m. would be the prime time to do that. Purple is Downing Street. So, I think what they've done are Downing, so, what they did last year, and I believe this seemed to work fairly well, is they tried to keep Downing open as long as possible. So, we would block off either end of Muskogee, so that people could get through Downing, back and forth to school and all that good stuff, and then we would close that off around noon to 1:00, when pedestrian traffic starts getting a little heavier. Yellow road closures are for the car show, so that would not actually happen until, well, the yellow would be at 5:00 o'clock on Friday evening. That is just Delaware and Katuah. Again, so that we don't have a lot of vendors parking in those spaces, so that we can shut them down at 6:00 a.m. Saturday morning, so the car show can move in. Water Street, we would like to block Delaware to Katuah, maybe a little out, because there's a couple of little alleyways right there that we would need to close. And that would be closed at 6:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. Other than that, I think that is it. I know that kind of sounds like a lot, but if you, it's got a little thing on the side, you can look at those and see.
Have you given any consideration to Spring Street, maybe doing that at a slightly later time? I know that that could be kind of a big week for book buyback, sellback, and everything else, and it's a one-way street now.
Correct.
And they have no way to get down there if you block it off then.
Yes, and I actually think I can speak to those vendors. There's only about five on that end. I think next year, what we will look at is completely capping that and allowing them to go down and back up through Spring Street, and not even making that, you know, shutting that off for vendors at all. And I've tried to keep them as far down as possible. So, I may, what I can do is speak to those vendors and see if maybe they want to do a little bit of a later check-in, and then that way, we could kind of keep that open a little longer.
I'm glad you pointed that out, because that was an issue in the past I personally witnessed, and I know that those businesses were very upset.
Yes, and I have spoken with some of them, and they had some great ideas on that. So, essentially, that's what we would like to do next year, is completely take that out of the equation.
Okay, so Jamie, just to clarify, if you were to put this in a motion, you would say that you would like to close Morgan by 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, closing Muskogee Avenue at 6:00 a.m. on Friday, and then clarify for me the orange, again, what did you want to close?
Orange is Morgan. Yellow is the car show. And pink. Yellow would be Friday evening.
Okay, so...
And then the pink is all-day car show Saturday.
You want to close Katuah and Delaware?
Just on Friday evening.
Friday, okay.
Yeah, so we don't have any kind of overnight parkers.
It appears to be the pretty standard issue.
It is. It really, yes, yes. And I might have confused it a little bit by giving all the little details, but...
I too use Google Maps, so I caught them quickly.
Okay, so what time specifically do you want Katuah and Delaware to be closed on Friday?
5:00, after our...
So, from 5:00 p.m. until when?
Until 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. Could be earlier, if they're out of there by then. And then pink, I'm sorry, I didn't add that part in Park Avenue. So, basically, from the back of the old, what was that segue? The Cherokee Nation Building, right next to the Peace Pavilion, that would be closed to Shawnee on Saturday only.
Okay.
Because the car show is kind of shifting back a little bit.
Okay, so closing South Park Avenue...
Mm-hmm.
Saturday, you said?
Correct.
Starting at what time?
6:00 a.m.
6:00 a.m. and 8:00?
Until 4:00 p.m., or sooner.
Okay. That'll just cause pain in the moment. Okay, so right now, your motion is close Morgan by 5:00 p.m. Thursday, close Muskogee Avenue 6:00 a.m. Friday, close Katuah Delaware Friday from 5:00 p.m. till 4:00 p.m. Saturday, close South Park Avenue Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And now on Morgan and Muskogee, when are they going to reopen?
It would be...
Saturday night?
11:50 on Saturday night.
So, midnight Saturday night.
Correct.
So, we're going to say close Morgan by 5:00 p.m. Thursday till midnight Saturday. Close Muskogee Avenue 6:00 a.m. Friday until midnight Saturday.
Correct.
Does this sound like the world's longest motion yet?
I know.
What can we add to it, Jamie? What can we add to it?
Is this what you're trying to make into a motion?
You guys can make it a motion. How do you adopt the whole map without a motion, right, Grant?
Can we adopt this, and how about I move that we adopt the closures represented on the map?
Can you adopt the whole map without having to say, oh, thank God? I was like, how in the world?
All right. Okay, that's where you were headed. I was making a motion to...
Yeah, I was trying to get it all so we could put it in a motion. I didn't know we could adopt that.
Yeah.
Well, the big thing is, there's no end times on the map, so, I mean...
Oh, you're right. The map doesn't...
I do apologize for that.
No, well, that's ultimately can be decided by the event organizers and staff.
Okay, so just to clarify, we would be able to close Muskogee at 6:00 a.m. rather than 4:00 a.m. Correct? My map says 4:00 a.m. That was my wishful thinking.
Okay.
So, if you're going to adopt the map, that would be at 4:00 a.m. Just FYI.
Which I don't think's going to make Hillbilly's worth a difference.
I don't think.
I know, I'm not down there in that two hours, yeah.
Having been down there at 6:00, it wasn't that crowded, so...
All right, so, councilors, if you don't have any other questions, then we can certainly entertain a motion to entertain these closures starting at these times, and kind of lead it up to staff and the organizers to kind of figure out to when the end times may be. And I'd just get to kind of written down, published, and worked out ahead of time as best you could.
I don't have a copy of the map. I want one. I want one.
It's going to be a lot of annotations.
I said it all by you. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the map according to the main street.
According to the main street decision? A motion by Councilor Combs?
Second.
Second from Councilor Long. Any final questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilor Long, yes. Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hale. Item number five, discussion and possible action to appoint Mark Gish to the Telecall Public Works Authority Board. Mr. Gish would be taking over for Mr. Rozell. Mr. Rozell, he has stayed on past the end date of his term, because of, there's some law out there that lets people continue to serve so long as their successor hasn't been appointed and approved. And so, I've kind of taken advantage of that to let him see through the completion of Telecall Public Works' new building, and that's in the books now, and it's probably time to have someone else go ahead and finish out the remainder of that term, and Mr. Gish has stepped forward to do so, and I would appoint him to take over again the remainder of Mr. Rozell's term.
Move.
Second.
Motion second from Councilor Combs and Long. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number six, is discussion and possible action to accept the recommendation from the Airport Board on Lochner Engineering Firm for future grant program at the Telecall Municipal Airport. Ms. Carr, Ms. Pritten, Mahaney, anybody who wants to say some things?
The Airport Board met and selected Lochner Engineering Firm. I have present Dr. Mahaney, who's the Airport Board President. I have the representatives from Lochner, and I have Kelly Prittenin, who's the manager of the airport. If there's any questions.
It's something that has to be done for the OAC and the FCC, or, excuse me, OAC and the FAA. And I taught a class today on federal bureaucracy, so I've got my alphabet soup all mixed up. I apologize, but I've been talking about it all day. Anything you would like to throw in, otherwise, we can do what we need to do.
I would like to make a comment. The last year or so, Lochner's above and beyond any engineering firm I've ever seen work on the airport for ease, contact, working with us. I highly recommend that you follow the Airport Board's recommendation to make them our engineering firm for upcoming grants in the future.
They've worked with us for quite a while, yeah, so...
And the one question, I'm sorry.
No, I just recognized familiar face in the audience there, yes.
Sorry. Page one, the bottom one, number three, meant to designate and writing a person to act as a sponsor representative with respect to the services to be rendered under the agreement. And so, do we designate now that person as part of this document, correct, Grant?
You can't, or you do it on a date.
Maybe later on.
Okay.
Missed the first bit of that. Is that, the part she's referring to, is that when, can you reread that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Designating writing a person to act as sponsor representative with respect to the services to be rendered under this agreement. Such persons shall have complete authority to transmit instructions, receive information, and interpret and define sponsor policies and decisions.
Yeah, you don't need that right now?
Yeah, we don't need that now, yeah.
Okay, so at what point do we need to come in?
We'll do another agreement for the specific to apply.
Okay.
Yeah, there'll be a very big stack of papers that discuss...
The sponsor.
The city of Telecall.
Right.
The first paragraph says, "City of Telecall, Oklahoma, with offices located..."
The city of Telecall, Oklahoma.
"Here would then refer to as the sponsor."
But this says sponsor representative. And so, that would be a different thing, correct, Grant?
Yeah, but again, that can be hashed out later date.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah. This anticipates further agreements being reached by the parties. It's kind of a global agreement, so that they get moving, looking into grants, things of that nature.
Okay.
It's pretty much, just like the other ones we had done.
Jason was usually the sponsor, the representative, his signature, he would sign it. We'd just do that every agreement. Or the mayor, whoever the mayor.
Yeah, if you want my signature coming up, it'll be mine.
And like you said, I just want to say, too, we've been working, I've worked for Mayor Purdy, and went all the way through your tenure, and we appreciate working for the community and the board, and it's a great place to work and help you, we enjoy helping you improve your airport. Thank you.
Tracked me down to the conference. He signed some of those big stacks of paper at a lunch table in Oklahoma City in the middle of a conference, yeah. They moved the extra mile.
It was the first year, I think.
Yeah, exactly, it was.
I'll say, too, that he reminded me, sorry, but I, two years ago, I came here on my honeymoon with my wife, and did a bid opening in Telecall. She accepted that, so, some always...
Wait, you brought your wife to a bid opening for your honeymoon?
Well, my honeymoon, we had to do the bid opening, so we did our honeymoon here in Telecall. And she came and helped me go through the bids.
Well, I tell you what, my wife's in the audience for my very last meeting, and so I just wanted to point out to her that everything is, in fact, relative when it comes to...
She got to go to Europe a few years later, so I was like...
No, you were supposed to stop talking.
Not too late, we can cancel that conversation.
Yes. I'm like his remarks, drinking from the record.
Is there a motion to adopt this, the agreement with the engineering firm, Lochner?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for Councilors Bliss and Long. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number seven, is discussion and possible action to approve city of Telecall's skate park reservation and operating policy. Ms. Foteet, Carr, see Mr. Henson out there somewhere? A lot of people interested in how this goes down. What have you come up with?
Well, we brought it back, because we were waiting for council to make recommendations from the last meeting. And so, the wording remains as it was.
That's correct.
And we were waiting for somebody to reach out. Everybody was going to tell us what changes they wanted to make.
Do you all have anything that you'd like to throw in there tonight, councilors?
I know for myself, the only issue that I have is the fee schedule. And I would like to, I'm not comfortable with the fee schedule how it is. I just think that that is expensive. And I'd like to look at it, and I started the week, I started last week looking at some other cities, and then I got life and work and whatnot, took me in a different direction. And so, I didn't, I wasn't able to continue my search, but the few that I saw, I didn't really, the other cities that I looked at, I didn't really see a fee schedule for their skate park, per se, and they, and so I needed to dig a little bit more to see if maybe it's just lumped in as parks or whatnot. But it just seems, I mean, that $600 a day just seems like an expensive hurdle for, especially some of the organizations that would be renting the skate park, I think, to pay. So, that's my reservation, and so, and I will completely own the fact that I didn't, in these last two weeks, do all my proper research and get it back to you all and whatnot at a schedule that I would be comfortable with, but at this point, I'm not comfortable moving forward with the fee schedule. So, if we want to put, I would be, I would be comfortable maybe setting the policy in place, and then revisiting the fee schedule. You know, but that's just me, I'm one of four.
Are you, can I talk? Charles, what do people pay for, when they rent the pool for private parties? And I know we're talking apples and bananas, but what is, because I've been to several parties there, it's like a two-hour block at a time for a private birthday party, like 150?
150.
150?
It's a 150 with a $100 deposit, and that's a two-hour rental.
Okay, and so, we're talking about kind of comparing, benchmarking a two-hour rental to like a 12-hour rental, so, just to throw that out there. But yeah, I'm okay with tabling it, Stephen, until we have more time to research and talk about this again in May, if you'd like.
Sure. And I think in theory, you're looking at a 12-hour, but probably more realistically, those groups are going to rent it for, you know, four hours, eight hours.
Four to eight hours.
I mean, most events that they're going to put on out there aren't going to be a 24-hour, 18-hour, 12-hour event. I mean, it's going to be, come see Tony Hawk, because he's coming to Oklahoma City, I saw that. Maybe we should get him down our way. You know, come see him for an hour, two hours, or the skate, the competition, you know, but those competitions, I think, also would be open to the public. So, there's some events, I think we're also crossing over, we're getting our wires crossed a bit, because some of the events that they're going to put on are completely open to the public, and so they wouldn't even need the rental agreement to do that. I mean, it's come out and skate and do this. So, it would only be for specific events that maybe those meet and greets, things of that nature. And I'm looking at you, we haven't really had a lot of conversation about it, but it's going to be a thumbs up, so I must be somewhat on the right track.
You know, just so long as you continue to pursue some kind of guidance or policy when it comes to either restricting access to the park, or having, you know, a third party dictate what activities are acceptable at any given moment.
Sure.
You know, that's really all it's meant to accomplish, as far as I understand, so...
So, are you okay with going ahead and setting the policy?
Yeah, I mean, I think the policy, I like the policy. I mean, I think that we need to have some sort of policy to govern. My only reservation is the fee schedule. And so, if we want to, you know, adopt the policy, then we can do that.
Why don't we just wait, and we can do it all correct in one motion?
Sure.
And so, with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion we table until the May meeting.
Even motion to table consideration of the skate park reservation and operating policy. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Hires. A discussion on tabling motion. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Charles. Item number eight, is discussion and possible action regarding health insurance end date for terminated employees. Ms. Page?
Yes, and really, this just kind of came about a little bit of a bluke. We had a situation with an employee who was asking for information regarding, you know, the end date of coverage, and some things were brought up, and so, it was kind of strange. What happened was, when I contacted Benefit Health Advisors, they explained to me that in this particular case, the coverage didn't end until March 1st. And this individual had left employment with the city of Telecall in January, January the 17th. So, what had happened was, the way the plan was designed, and that top sheet there just kind of gives you an idea, this has been a place since 1997, so, or, well, actually, 1995. So, you know, the first page, the second page there, item number three, it just talks about how that was set up, flee back when, and I'm not sure kind of the reason or the methodology for that. But it is somewhat standard that, I mean, a lot of companies, our businesses and such, they have coverage end on, you know, the date your employment ends, or the end of the month in which you terminate. With the ACA, that kind of makes things simple. I realize that that may be phasing out this next year. I know the individual mandate has been eliminated for 2019, but as an employer, we're still not removed from that yet. So, nonetheless, my recommendation is the end of the month in which they terminate. So, the last two pages there are just the amendment, and you can see there that the language on items four and five just talks about the end of the month.
Well, we can't do anything about it tonight. It would be, right, I mean, it would be something that would have to come back up when you've got a new agreement in front of you.
This is the agreement.
This is the new one?
This is, well, this is an amendment.
The last two pages.
Yeah, the last two pages are the amendment. So, we don't have to redo the whole plan document, it's just the amendment.
And so, just to clarify, since we're just getting right now, the, hold on. Page two, number three...
Is the current.
Is the current.
Yes.
And where is the new proposed?
On the third page there, and it's items three and, four and five, where it says the end of the month in which you cease to be eligible. And just the language is changed there to state the end of the month in which you cease to be included as an employee. So, that's just the change on that language.
Standard practice, ma'am.
Excuse me?
It's standard practice, ma'am.
Exactly. I was really surprised in this case, because what had happened is someone hadn't received their Cobra information, and it's like, oh my goodness, and why? And so, when I did that, it's like, well, the coverage didn't end until, you know, the end of February, and I'm like, well, I entered that on the, you know, the 18th of January, why is that taking so long? And that's when I found out that it was this way, which is very strange. Maybe it had something to do with the way the meetings, you know, were held back then. I mean, again, this was back in 1995. So, just kind of maybe updating that.
I know, where Stephen and I, we terminate midnight at the last day of employment. And I know, we are self-insured, correct? The city's self-insured, and then basically, this company, Maritain, Maritain, however you say that, is like our third-party administrator, right?
They are the administrator for our health insurance. They are it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, any surgeries or prescription costs, anything that happens after the employee's terminated, then that would come on our dime?
It would.
We would be eating that at 100%. But then, if they employ off to Cobra, then that's going to retro back to the termination date.
Exactly.
And also provide coverage on that same.
Mm-hmm.
And then, do we also pay self-insured? Do we also fund all the Cobra expenses?
All the Cobra expenses?
Right.
Yes, we do. Is that right? If they pay their premiums.
Are we 100% self-insured, though?
Partial.
And...
Yeah, we have a reinsurance. I mean, we have a cap.
Right, a stock cap deal, but what, you say we pay Cobra premiums? And then what did you just say about Cobra? We're paying?
She asked, yes, we pay that as we pay any of our other claims, unless you think otherwise, Jason, and I'll certainly dig into that. But that's my understanding.
So, if I'm an employee and I...
Because we've had somebody on Cobra, and they've been hitting...
Terminate, and then I...
Good for them.
I have a $45,000 surgery the day after I terminate, and then even if I opt to Cobra, then that's still...
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of opening for our insurance, eating it. Yeah. Or us, eating it.
And I'm open to either or. I mean, it's something that, because it is standard and customary, typically, every employer that I've worked for, they've had one employer that's done it both ways, but since the healthcare reform, a lot of companies have just kind of leaned towards that end of the month, for reporting purposes, so, there's no mental reporting. You're still going to report that coverage for the whole month, regardless.
And for all, for all, I know, I'm wrong. I've either got a pleasant memory, or something has changed because of all of the healthcare memory or something has changed because of all of the healthcare changes that have come about in the last few years.
And it's, it's ever-changing.
So the double check, but I do not believe that historically, if you'd ask me, I would say, no, we don't pay that.
Okay.
Have we looked at shopping plans?
We are currently doing that right now, based on your request. I mean, we're just talking to different brokers and stuff right now, but this plan isn't up for renewal until Oct- or, actually, November one, is when that, that change would take place. So right now, we're just talking to other vendors and such, also with, with our current vendor, with Benefit Health Advisors and Maritain, you know, they obviously would, would love to continue to have our business.
So what point does our reinsurance kick in?
I don't have the exact number for that, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
I mean, is that an issue with the end of that coverage? I didn't really, wasn't expecting that coverage.
Yeah, we're kind of fanning out, but...
Yeah, I mean, just wanted to try to stop any bleeding or any potential for any additional claims, you know, the...
Literal likewise, or whatever.
Leave your tip.
No, the fact of the matter is, is I don't have anybody separating between now and the end of the month, so it's almost irrelevant. Um, we do have a couple of terminations that are on our agenda, but they're individuals that are not covered under our health insurance, so it's not impacting them. Um, you know, my goal and desire was just to be able to clean that up a little bit, um, and we can certainly go back and, and look at that and, and amend that to change if, if, if that's what you so choose. Um, I will take the recommendation from the council to do that, it's very easy to do, so.
But for tonight, we're staying focused on the term modification of this language that would...
Well, and I, if you want to change it, the end of the day, I can go back to the brokers tomorrow and, um, and ask for that amendment, and we can move forward with that. But because it does impact, I mean, we talked to Grant about this, and that's why, um, that we did bring that to city council, because it could potentially impact someone's, you know, for an employee out of the city, so.
I hope that the amendment makes sense, especially with ACA. I mean, I can see where we work, it might not, but I think it's a much bigger organization.
When we enter a renewal period, we can also look at, you know, changing that as well, if it's, you know, being that, hey, employers are gonna get off the hook on this thing too, so maybe we do change that to go with the, at the, you know, midnight at the, the your employment ends.
Essentially, what I'm hearing you say is, with the ACA reporting, you, you have to send that extra piece that says they've been, they have had coverage every month, or it says twelve months, and then we have to, when you're done filing your taxes, you have to say, I've been fully covered for twelve months, or five months.
But the individual mandate has been removed since two thousand and nineteen, so two thousand and eighteen was the last year that, you know, I'm not a tax expert, maybe Dr. Uzo could, could maybe get some guidance on that. I'm not sure exactly how that question will be answered in two thousand and nineteen, but for two thousand and eighteen, yes. So anybody who's done their taxes by today, um, they had to answer that question. But the individual mandate has been removed, um, the mandate for employers has not been removed as of yet, so employers, regardless of what the employee has to answer, we still have to report that information.
Well, if you think it's an agreeable piece of language, we entertain a motion.
Grant, would you recommend that we go with the end of the month, or from a legal perspective, we midnight on the day of termination date?
You can play it out either way.
Okay.
Administratively, I think they were, my understanding from trying to, the city in that regardless administratively, it might make more sense for now to leave it through the end of the month, but...
Okay.
I'm open to either, legally, you can do it either way. Quite frankly, you can come back with this, you can approve this and come back with the amendment down to midnight next month, as long as you don't have anybody in that category between now and then.
Until November, when you're redoing your thing, and...
Exactly, I mean, I, I certainly, um, you know, anytime you do a renewal, you always look at those amendments and just clean things up and, and such, so that's something we can certainly look at.
Counselors, what's your opinion?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion, Counsel Hires, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counsel Long. Any final comments, questions, remarks, reactions? Hearing none, clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number nine is discussion of possible action to accept self-termination of law and money, part-time labor in the Parks and Recreation Department. Ms. Page, doesn't need any explanation?
Pretty standard, yeah, it, it's a lifeguard, you know, Heather Torrento has been gearing up for this next summer and is really working very hard, so it's just playing enough.
Counselors, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve this petition.
Is there a second?
Right.
Long and Combs, clerk, roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number ten is discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of Angela Drews, Deputy Court Clerk in the Managerial Department, same thing, pretty straightforward, is that right?
Yeah, she, um, you know, she did turn, you know, effective April the third. She'd been out on, on a leave of absence, um, and is just not gonna be returning, so...
And so her resignation's effective April the third?
She asked for her resignation to be effective immediately when she turned it in, I mean, it's pretty, pretty standard resignation letter, I'm just presenting it to you guys now, because it was after, you know, after our council meeting.
Um, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Angela Drews with an effective date of April the third.
Is there a second?
Right.
A second. Counselor Combs, clerk, roll call again, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eleven is discussion and possible action to hire a collector in the Solid Waste Department.
Yes, um, this is a hire for an individual named John Cruell, um, to hire as a collector, starting salary for that is a T-111 step one, and that's the recommendation, um, from, uh, his last name is spelled C-R-U-W-E-L-L.
C-R-U-W-E-L-L.
First name, John?
John.
The traditional spelling.
And you said T-111 step one?
Yes.
Um, I make a motion that we hire John Cruell as a collector in the Solid Waste Department at T-111 step one.
Right.
Motion on the second?
Um, Mayor, can I ask a question, please?
You may.
Um, can we, before we start going into ordinance discussion again, can we possibly move item number twenty-one up next, because I think all these ladies here are probably...
No, because I'm going to actually try to handle that very rapidly, much more rapidly than you probably anticipate, so...
Okay.
Let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, is there anything that we need to be aware of on these next items before I say we're getting ready to sign, any changes, any operations, any problems?
No, I sent the, uh, final review copies to all the counselors last week, they've been reviewed by Attorney Lloyd, and so didn't receive any comment back.
Okay. Then, Counselors, just like in the last meeting, I'll read all of these items, I believe the phrase is in toto, and you all can approve these in a single motion unless there is an objection. Do you wish to express one at this particular moment in time?
Except for item number twenty.
And I'll skip twenty because it is slightly different, yeah, I did that mistake last month, yeah, so, we'll, uh, we'll do all of them through item nineteen. Item twelve is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve seventy, uh, twelve seventy-five, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter One Building Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Item thirteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve seventy-six, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter One Building Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Fourteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance twelve seventy-seven, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter One Building Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Item fifteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve seventy-eight, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter Two Employment Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Item sixteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve seventy-nine, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter Seven Housing Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Seventeen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter Nine Mechanical Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Number eighteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-one, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter Three Fuel, Gas Code, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. And nineteen is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-two, two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Five Building Regulations, Chapter Four Electrical Installations, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Counselor, I did the best I could to make it go quickly, do you all have any objections at all? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to pass all of these, they're just bookwork from a, a couple of years ago where we did resolutions instead of ordinances.
Can you repeat that?
In one breath.
All right?
I make a motion to approve items twelve through nineteen.
Is there a second, Counsel Hires?
No.
I think they heard you.
Second.
Okay.
I was waiting for the re-read.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, the second from Counsel Combs, just as Counsel Hires has a motion. Any final questions, comments? Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number twenty is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance twelve eighty-three to two thousand and nineteen, amending Part Six Licensing and Business Regulations, Chapter Four Residential Sales, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talakwa. Same thing, we can do a motion and a second, correct, to approve this by ordinance? It's, uh, the same as the other seven items, just it was a different part of the code, right?
No. This is the residential sales.
Just the reinventing the wheel.
So, yeah. So we might have more discussion about this.
The garage sales from last week, okay.
I did do some more research, um, I looked at McAllister, um, Salas Hall, Glenpool, and that was, uh, El Reno. The other ones that you suggested, Sand Springs, Muskogee, I think that was the only other two that you suggested.
Well, I, from the top of my head, I knew often when we do salary surveys, we use like our seven universes.
Sure.
And I thought, well, if they're great for salary compensation information, what about other items that we...
Right.
That we also do.
So, so this one is pretty much, um, this is Salas Hall, and it's similar to what we have now. Then it gets a little more, um, like where we're going when we get to El Reno. El Reno issues the signs. It's a five-dollar fee, the only signs that can be placed are the signs from El Reno that are provided when you get your license. Glenpool, they don't do the signs, but they do identify that you can place them in the city's right-of-way. They do, you know, like they should say, say that you prohibit it in the ODOT right-of-way. But it's the only one that I was able to find that they actually promote placing it in the city's right-of-way, which is one of the biggest issues right now. And that's what we were proposing, is to allow that placement during the term of the sale.
Does section four oh eight not change? Does it remain unchanged?
Um, we don't have four oh eight in our... I don't have that up there, the ordinance, what's, what's four oh eight say?
Well, we got, you know, section four oh two eight, section four oh seven, is section four oh nine, is there not a four oh eight? Am I missing something?
No, we only included what was being changed, so four eight wasn't changed. Yeah, those are the only revisions, are the, the sentences that are striked out, and the highlight is the replacement. You know, I didn't get much feedback from the last meeting, and so I don't anticipate...
We were handed it at the meeting.
I didn't anticipate, that's passive, and I anticipated more discussion.
It's our first reading, now, second, and so whenever you all end up coming up with something, it can, uh, be addressed. Ms. Jackson?
Um, okay, so am I reading it right, that if I wanted to have a yard sale, I would only be able to, I could only use the signs provided by the city that I would get from the city?
Correct. And we carved out a, any newspaper in general circulation within the, in this ordinance.
Okay. Um, now, I know in there it said that the signs would be numbered, so would I be allowed to write on them? Like, what would be on these signs?
We haven't figured out those details, whether or not we're gonna issue a sticker that you put on the sign, um, how, how we would handle that. Or if we give you a disposable sign, we haven't...
Because I would want to be able to direct people to where the sale is, and if I can't write on the sign, then...
No, I mean, it's gonna have to have your address, that's the, we, that's why we're trying to change it, because we recognize the key to a good sale is your signs.
Right.
To get them to your property, so that's the reason for the change. Right now, you're only allowed to have one sign on your property.
Yeah, I think what gets lost in this conversation is that the rule is written, is that, I mean, there are plenty of people that could potentially be subject to two-hundred-dollar fines if they were to put up more than one sign more than two-hundred feet away from the sale. And, uh, and we're trying to loosen it up, uh, but there, we get accused of, you know, reinventing the wheel or whatever, when we're actually just trying to be a little bit more flexible and responsive to some of the feedback we've actually gotten from the public, very real, very direct, and, uh, very, very genuine, you know, and their frustration that, and the staff too, by the way, they have to walk up to a, uh, an uncomfortable situation at the sale and say, you know, hey, here's your signs, or I picked up your signs, they were, you know, in the, on sidewalk, they'd blown into the road, uh, you know, a lot of different situations, and it was just always uncomfortable. And, uh, and we're trying to minimize those types of tense confrontation and all that type of situations.
Well, how about this, instead of passing an ordinance and then figuring out what we're doing with the signs, let's figure out what we're doing with the signs, and then pass the ordinance, right? So I mean, we have marching orders going forward, and we can step one foot in front of the other, and I'll be bundling the ball, figuring out what we're gonna do with the signs, so I mean, I...
I wasn't gonna put too much work into finding those logistics unless I knew you supported this idea, because if you just wanna scrap the whole ordinance altogether, like some communities have, that's fine with me as well, and then we can go do the signs in the right-of-way to everybody, you know?
Well, I appreciate the ordinance to try to keep people from having a perpetual yard sale, right, which I think is what it's trying to address, but, um...
Yeah. Because Muskogee, they don't, you don't have a garage sale permit in Muskogee, but I imagine their enforcement of signs in the right-of-way is a little more strict, and so if you do place one of your garage sale signs that has your address, you're gonna get a ticket because they have your address, so...
But they also have like a panhandler's license in Muskogee too, which is a little different.
So, well, we have...
So I'm just saying, they've got some interesting things, right, yeah, they've got some interesting quirks over there that we don't have here.
An ordered or solicitor's license, and a lot of these times, people don't get these licenses.
Right.
Well, yeah, we can, you can vote say if you'd like again, and, uh, come up, I don't know if that level of detail is gonna go into an ordinance, but if that's what's desired, then it can certainly be, be looked up. Counsel Long, do you have one other comment?
I'm ready to make a motion to table.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion to be tabled this until May.
Motion to table, is there a second? Is there a second to table the ordinance?
Sorry?
Is it sure, why not?
Yes. I will, I will take that as a second to your motion. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Hotschbliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number twenty-one is discussion of possible action to adopt resolution number four fifteen nineteen, adopting safe routes to school policy, Counsel Hires.
So in your packet, you have the Safe Routes to School Resolution, so we have some people here that can probably speak very well to this if you have any questions, but essentially, Talakwa has adopted the Safe Routes to School policy in the past, and so this is a kind of a revised version of that? Yes?
I'm not aware of us adopting a policy, the...
We got some money, didn't we?
I'll give you some background on the Safe Routes to School program. So the best I can tell, it was about 2009, I think Val can back me up on that. We identified a Safe Routes to School grant opportunity, and so that's when we formed a Safe Routes to School committee. It was primarily made up of Cherokee Nation personnel, Talakwa Public Schools, and city. We applied for the grant, I believe it was May 2011 is when we submitted the application. And we rewarded the grant, and then the funding from the federal level disappeared for several years.
They didn't pass a transportation bill for like two years or something?
Yeah, so I don't think funds became available until around '14 or '15 is when we actually had money that we could start working on projects and promoting. And so, you know, we've, this committee was originally housed under the BEST Coalition, so that's, it was a work group, a committee, a principal committee, and that's kind of the genesis of me even talking about planning things, is with my participation on the Safe Routes to School committee. And we've done activities, I got some pictures for you. We, every year, we do a walk to school, and we do a bike to school. Last year, we did a bike, roll, and stroll to school. We've also put on, this just as a heads up, May 9th is this year's bike to school day we'll be participating in at our elementary schools. This is the fall's walk to school at Greenwood. We meet at remote locations, and the remote location for Greenwood is the Senior Citizen Center, and so all the parents drop off the kids, and then we walk as a group to Greenwood. We have school resource officers and bike patrol that participate with us. It's a fun event, kids love it. We walk through the neighborhood with the sidewalks, they don't exist, but on Maple, we do have a long stretch, and it's hard to see, but the kids, they go back three blocks to the south there on Maple. I think we had over 100 kids at Greenwood this year. Some on skateboards. Another thing that we've done with our Safe Routes to School money is provide helmets for other kids. We've given away in excess of 200 in this community at different bike rodeo events. This was actually at the grand opening of the skate park. We gave 150 helmets out with that grant, just at this one event only. They loved it. Now I go down there now, and I don't see any helmets, and I ask them what's going on. I guess they're just too cool. And so some of the other things we do, we've done with that money is, oh, mind control, there we go, is the open streets. We've done that for the past two summers. We closed down water, and we had events for play, relax, and active, and food trucks. It was a great success. The only complaint we get is it's too hot, and we recognize that, and so if we do it again this year, it won't be in June, or we've moved it to the fall. So that's been a fun event that has been made possible by the Safe Routes to School grant. Back to what you said, we were awarded $200,000. $20,000 of it was for education and outreach, and 180 was for infrastructure projects.
I thought we had a little more than that. Was it just 200? I thought like 225 or something.
I think it was just 200. And then 20 was outreach education, that's how we purchased the helmets and things like that. And then these are projects that the committee identified in and around Greenwood Elementary that are going to be funded by the Safe Routes to School grant. The biggest hurdle right now is rideaway easement acquisition, as it is with every street and sidewalk project that we take on. So it's hard to tell from that map, but it's Joe Street from Bluff to Maple, Maple continuing the sidewalk north of Greenwood's playground to Fuller, and then Maple from the western entrance of Oakwood to Cedar. And then the Cherokee Nation has committed to revamping the intersection with Ross and the bypass, where we will actually have a crosswalk out of the moat that surrounds Talakwa, known as the bypass, to where you can go on a sidewalk from the parks downtown all the way out to the clinic, the Cherokee Nation's clinic. So that's going to be exciting. Something we never thought we'd get.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, the first time this came up, we didn't have Heritage Elementary.
That's correct.
And so Heritage has, I mean, that just tells a little bit about how long it's been, I mean, how invested it's been within our community. Now, we've done some things at Heritage, we've been able to repurpose some of that money to build some sidewalks and to do some things.
Yeah, that's been thanks in part to BEST Coalition and Cherokee Nation. They've been the funders of those connections from the neighborhood in South Ridge to Heritage. And we've also, there was a cutout on that map that I didn't point out that was for Cherokee, and we've already deleted those, the sidewalks around Cherokee Elementary. So the last elementary that doesn't have complete sidewalks in the neighborhood is Greenwood, and that's...
So tonight, what we are, will be, what we potentially will be doing is passing the resolution, and you can see the resolution is on 43, page 43 of your council packet, 43 and 44. And then it's Exhibit A, which is essentially, we, we agree to the resolution, which is essentially, we would like to have safe routes and safe walking for children, biking and skating and all of those, that they can be able to get to school. And then attachment is each one of the, is the sections that are behind it, and it's essentially putting together a plan on how we can implement...
What we're already doing.
What we're already doing.
So, right, so if you'll, what your packet has is, it's got a lot of extra information that makes it cumbersome review. And so I'll point your attention to the screen. This is the actual policy, and we deleted all the guidance information for it, and this is what the actual policy that you would adopt through the resolution, where you're identifying a lead entity. We have that, that's the Active Living and Transportation Committee, which was formerly the Safe Routes to School committee, where you just broaden its scope. Go ahead.
So just to clarify, page 30 and 31 of the packet, which is the actual resignation with the signature block...
The whereas.
For the mayor, Ms. Brandt, and Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
That's what...
And that, after all, the whereas, the only line is, is it adopts the Exhibit A policy.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. You're up, you're up front, I was talking about, no, back, yeah.
It's a lot of verbiage.
Yeah.
There's a lot of whereas's.
Yeah.
But then the policy is relatively short and sweet. You have three definitions, and then it's pretty much identifying, like I said, what we're already doing, where we have collaboration, go again, I can't read it, our planning, our support, we've identified, we planned on what we want to approve, like the map that I showed you around Greenwood. The only thing that we really don't do as a, as a function of the city is report out on everything, and what's the word that they use? Evaluate and report, track and evaluate. Those are the things that would make it official, where I bring what's happened to you and report.
So that was a long way around the saying, it's just a revision of what we're already doing, and you needed to adopt the resolution approving Exhibit A, which is what we're already doing?
Essentially, yes, essentially. The Safe Routes to School program, it happened organically around that grant, with having our coalitions with BEST, and Healthy Living Program with TSET, Cherokee Nation with Public Health, and working and collaborating with them. It was just grassroots.
And of course, leave it to the federal government to be the one to throw a kink and everything for about three years with no funding available through transportation bill shortage.
Shouldn't talk about the federal government.
Yeah. I guess, you know, Patriot Act, what, right there? I don't know.
Well, with that being said, in 2020, the grant cycle for, it's called TAP program, it'll be a new funding cycle that we can apply after...
Transportation Alternatives?
Program.
Program, okay.
Yeah, I double P, yeah.
So there's nothing in the language of the exhibit of the resolution that'll wreak havoc with the terms of the grant and the original...
No, I think this helps support our cause for any future grant applications, yes.
Are you okay with that?
Just really good structure to...
Exactly, she's got the revised rule.
Do you ready for a motion, Counselor Hires?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve resolution 41519.
Second.
Motion and second, Counselor Hires and Long?
I guess I should say, and, I mean, it's applied, and adopt the Safe Routes to School policy.
Yes, the resolution is. Okay.
And what that motion has?
Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Johnson, and I gotta tell you, if that's the last thing that I get out of here in this chair, then I'm a happy man, so. Then something that we've long been working for, so.
Absolutely.
Glad to be supportive. Before we sign off, I'll just tell everybody up here and in the crowd tonight that it's been an honor and a pleasure, and a privilege, and all of those things, and those words you said a lot, but I really do mean it, not just a cliche, it's been a lot of fun, and I appreciate the effort that went into everybody being around to tell me, you know, goodbye today and all those things. So really a hyper sentimental kind of guy, so I'll just leave it at a thank you, and let everybody get off him under the buzz of the PA system. But again, thank you for being on this journey, we appreciate it.
I've been here two years, and I'll thank you for your 19 years of service.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Well, we're exchanging pleasantries. I wouldn't piss up your boat if you got strong fire.
I wouldn't want you to do that. I think I was...
But I want to take a point of personal privilege right now, to, we have two people that are, no, throw them first. We have two people that, this is their last council meeting, and so just as the mayor of the council, or as the president of the council, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Nichols, for your 19 years of service, and it's been a pleasure to serve Long.
Appreciate it.
Sorry to make you regret my question.
And then also, Counselor Bliss, thank you for your four years of service to the city, and it's been a fun ride.
All right, I think that we do have one last little bit of technical business to pin it up here, which is, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Counselor Long, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Counselor Hires. Again, it has been a blast, so clerk, roll call us.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.